Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, December 7, Sioux Falls City Council Meeting. Thanks for joining us here tonight. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our roll, please.
Councilmember Brecky Erickson.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Nightzert. Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
All right, so we, just for the record, we have a quorum but barely. We have five councilors here. But Councilor Nightzert, I believe, is on the phone?
That's what I understand.
Okay.
I didn't hear him.
Councilor Nightzert, I just want to double check. You there? All right. Well, we'll hopefully get him on here soon, because we need him. All right. Tom Rooney, back with us to give our invocation. Tom's with the Direct Line Prayer Center, which, if you don't know where that is, straight across the street from City Hall. And I see you walking in and out of there, so thanks for coming tonight to give our invocation. So I would ask that you stand for Tom to give that invocation, and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you and praise you for the blessing that we have in this country and in this city. Lord, we thank you for the right and for the privilege of self-governance. I thank you, God, that you have called these ones into office for our city for this season. We pray, God, that you would guide and direct them, that you would lead them by your Spirit, that you would cause them, Lord, to exercise their duties with great diligence and wisdom, for wisdom builds the house. Knowledge establishes it and understanding, fills it with every good thing. And so we trust you, Lord, for that kind of construction for the home of our city. We thank you and praise you, God, for your work, and we just trust you now to lead and guide and direct tonight during this meeting, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Tom, for your invocation tonight. Move on to item, next item, four, Consent Agenda. Any changes to be made there, or can we get a motion?
Move approval.
Second Jensen.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion on that? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert. Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that item passes, five to zero. We'll skip ahead then to our regular agenda approval. Item 32, look for a motion, please.
Move to approve. Kylie.
Erickson.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Erickson to approve that. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that one passes, five to zero. We will now move on to our next item, please.
Item 33 is new 2021-22 Retail Malt Beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License and new 2022 Retail Wine License for Grevco Incorporated Shopping Cart Casino Number 22, 2707 East Sixth Street, pending finals per building services. Item 34 is a request to add video lottery terminals with the new 2021-22 Retail Malt Beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License. Item 35 is transfer of 2022 Retail Liquor License, including video lottery terminals from GSP Incorporated, Scarlett O'Hara's 3201 South Carolyn Avenue, to SC Dining Services LLC, Scarlett O'Hara's 3201 South Carolyn Avenue. 36 is transfer of 2022 Package Liquor License from Wang Enterprises Incorporated, King's Liquor Mart, 3725 North Cliff Avenue, to AKSH LLC, 3725 North Cliff Avenue. 37 is a special one-day liquor license for KJTLC to be operated at The Social, 301 South Thompson Avenue, for a wedding on December 11, 2021. Item 38 is a special one-day liquor license for T-Slot Incorporated to be operated at The State Theater, 316 South Phillips Avenue, for a private event on December 15, 2021. Item 39 is various retail liquor, package liquor, package delivery, and retail wine license renewals for 2022 to be operated at various locations in the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, identified as Exhibit E.
Hi, Jamie.
Good evening. Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I'm here to answer any questions that you have for items 33 through 39. And also, I need to request an amendment to number 34 by adding for Grevco Inc., Shopping Cart Casino Number 2, 2707 East Sixth Street, after the word "license." I failed to identify which location that was for that casino request, so apologies for that. And item 39, I want to point out, is the exhibit that contains the businesses that have failed an underage staying in the last renewal period. There was one business on that. The representative for that company, Thrifty Smoke Shop, is here tonight to speak to you if you have questions for him.
All right. Thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public wish to speak on any of these items here tonight?
Sorry, Sioux Falls. And there's a reason why I'm dressed like this, okay? So we're going to go to item 35 with Scarlett's. So, Jamie, I don't think nobody's here. Their lawyers are not here, but I'll get them. We have some issues at Scarlett's. I called today, so you're dressed like this, so can you imagine if I had tassels on and didn't have nothing else but a thong on? And they let their workers drink. Sexual assaults can happen in that bar. I want some security measurements in there. I am working with peer to put on a state law that when you work behind a bar or you a stripper, that you cannot be consuming alcohol. Right now, state allows you can. We need to know, there was call volumes here. I want to clarify a sexual assault that happened that was not a sexual assault here to the public, because I know that some sexual assault advocates wanted me, wanted to know what was going on. 2018, you had 44 calls for service. 2019, 30 calls for service. 2021, calls for service here. Mind you, I know that these people that are buying Scarlett's, Sickies Garage and Bar, don't know anything about them. I will reach out to them and every investor to see what we can do with security measurements in Scarlett's over here. There was one call that classified as an assault was the victim met a male at a different bar. They made several stops drinking at each bar, ended up in Scarlett's parking lot, where she reported that he groped her in the car in the parking lot. The report was made, but the victim did not wish to proceed this investigation. That didn't have nothing to do with inside of Scarlett's club at all. This is a very touchy subject here, and I'm going to be on them like a pit bull. This is not, we're not talking about Wiley's. We're not talking about just an ordinary club. We're talking about an adult entertainment club. 14 years I was in adult industry business, from 18 to 32. I know how it goes. I went from pole dancer to cage dancer to amateur porn. So I know. I've been there and done it. Made thousands of dollars legally. We need to know what security measurements are in place. The VIP rooms, if they have security in there for them. Do they do a criminal background check on their workers here? How is giving, letting them consume alcohol while dancing and doing lap dances that sexual assaults won't happen? We need measurements here, because I don't want the police call volume to be high on that. We need to try to lower the police calls for service here. There was a human trafficking case that didn't reach the police department about three years ago, from a woman that transferred from the Cuckoo there. She didn't want to press charges, so I'm going to let that one be here. Sickies Bar needs to put in some policies here on this. We're not talking about just a random bar here. We're talking about a bar, a casino, and a strip joint, and all of that goes hand in hand. If I hear of any, and I'm going to go, and I'm going to send people in there, and there's some advocates that are going to go in there, and if we see that this is not working out, we'll be back to council. We will make a news media report on this, because pole dancing is an art. It's not a prostitution joint. It's for entertainment. So when you're in that kind of entertainment business, dressed like I'm dressed or more or less than this, it's kind of disturbing to me that Scarlett's lets their employees drink while on the job. Very huge red flag on sexual assaults. And I don't even know if there were sexual assaults. Maybe there was, and the victims were embarrassed and not reported it. Very huge red flags here. And I know that people don't like to discuss it on this council, but I really don't care, because I'm here fighting the crime on the streets. Are y'all here to testify? Are y'all getting those answers in the streets to lower y'all's crime while y'all up here passing bills? No. Not even, not even the chair either. I will look into this, and I will reach out to both of these attorneys and to these owners here, but they're going to be on my red flag here with the city. The police department said they didn't have too many issues with them, but that's not meaning to say that we do have issues with them, and they're just not calling the police. So they will be on my red flag, and I can assure you that I will be back here if we have any issues, because every time I go in their business, it's recorded, and I'll show video.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on any of these items? Okay. I don't even know where we're at right now. All right. I'd need a motion to approve these items.
Move to approve.
Wait one second. I'm sorry, if I can.
Go ahead.
I'd like to have that applicant come forward that had the underage. Every time we have someone with an underage, it's just kind of.
Absolutely.
You know, customary that we have them come forward. Explain what happened and what steps you've taken to ensure this won't happen again.
Absolutely. I'm Dorian Kane, Del Rapids, South Dakota. So the, it was kind of a tragic thing. I lost an employee, and I had a trainee, had to work by herself before she was fully trained. So it was unfortunate that way. She, you know, the next day is when she was scheduled for that, so it fell through the cracks through this unfortunate loss of an employee. We have updated our training. We have a new system we're using in rotation with the other plans we've been using, and it's specifically for a package liquor onsite retail. So I feel comfortable and confident that that should keep us from having any problems going forward.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for this applicant? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
So we have a motion by Councilor Kylie on the floor to approve these items.
Second.
Second by Erickson. All right. And then we have an amendment we need made.
I'll make amendment to amend item 34 by adding, quote, "for Grevco Inc. Corp., Shopping Cart Casino Number 2, 2707 East Sixth Street," end quote, after the word, quote, "license."
Second Kylie.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Before we call the roll on that, Councilor Nightzert, you're on the line now.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we can start calling on him for the vote. So let's take a roll call on that amendment.
Councilmember Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Main motion is amended. Any other changes or amendments? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that passes, six to zero. We'll move on to item 40.
Item 40 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 111, Alcoholic Beverages. Sponsor is the mayor.
Hi, Jamie.
Good evening. Jamie Palmer with Licensing. The ordinance before you this evening is a proposal to increase the restaurant on-sale liquor license fee and the on-sale liquor license fee in accordance with the state law requirements. State law mandates that the fee for these license types be not less than a dollar per person according to our last census. That census number came in at 192,517. So the proposal before you is that the restaurant on-sale license fee be right at that 192,517, and the on-sale liquor license fee be increased to 240,646, or 240,646. And that calculates to approximately a dollar 25 per person, and that calculation has been used in the past. And so it would be consistent with how it's been set previously. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 40? All right, council, you have any questions on this item?
Did you, Mr. Mayor, there is one.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Deffenbaugh. I work in the industry, specifically the Hello High, and I'm speaking on the account of the liquor license increase. I am against it, mostly for the, basically the boundary to entry into entrepreneurship for this particular license. With an increase of $50,000, it creates a massive, massive chasm for someone entering the field of owning a bar. It also perpetuates and stifles the restaurant industry further, specifically increasing it for that bit amount. What I want to put forth tonight is considering how we can make sure that we are not creating a socio-economicified in this space of owning a bar, of owning a liquor license, so that more people have a chance at taking on that liquor license, creating places for socio-economic collisions, places where people can gather and discuss. And if more people had access to that, i.e. that maybe were not, have the advantage of capital of, say, several hundred thousands of dollars to actually acquire said liquor license. So I know it is not in the power of this council to change state law, but I'd ask the council to consider an increase of, say, $50,000 as being a detriment to entrepreneurship in this city. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, then, may anybody else speak on that one? All right, council, any questions for Jamie or city attorney? Council Erickson, go ahead.
No questions. I just a comment. Thank you for your testimony for that. You know, the increase is natural based on the census numbers going up. The rate is not increasing by, I mean, I understand what you're saying. There is a dollar amount. It is going up, but the rate that it's being charged is still maintaining the same. Technically, we could, what could it go up to? $1.50, $1.75? We could go way, way per census. I mean, we could go up and up and up. And so we're trying to keep that at a incremental approach versus the other. The other thing that this does is, a couple of years ago, we changed the restaurant license, and this naturally creates a divide between that. I know that some in the liquor industry were not excited about us doing that, and so we compromised and kept them the same. However, with having a restaurant license comes a ginormous burden of making sure that you have 51% of your sales be food and not just liquor. And so those are unlimited, and so they're at a lower rate. So those that want to have a restaurant license could either sell those and get this license if they wanted to, or however. I believe we only have two used right now. It's the same two. We were hoping to maybe see more. Didn't happen. But that creates a natural discrepancy, not a discrepancy, but a difference in the numbers to make them a little bit more affordable on that restaurant license. So I understand what you're saying. Unfortunately, I will be voting yes, sorry. But I think that it's an incremental approach. It is a substantial amount of money, but with that comes a substantial amount of responsibility to have a liquor license and all the things that go along with it. And so for those reasons, I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Should we put a motion on the floor on this?
Move approval. Jensen.
Second Erickson.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Erickson. Is there a discussion, councilors, on this item then? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that one passes six to zero. Move to item 41.
Item 41 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 720 East Maple Street from the I-1 Light Industrial District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District, number 15134, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval, five to zero. Private applicants, Galtel Properties LLC, Vincent Pertel.
Hey, Albert.
Council Mayor, Albert Schmidt, City of Sioux Falls, Planning and Development Services. This location here is at 720 East Maple Street, Sioux Falls, kind of on the northeast side of town. This location currently is sized at .53 acres, and the purpose here is just to match the existing use with the correct zoning of single-family RS. That can take any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on 41? Council, you got any questions here? Look for a motion, please. Move approval.
Second Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen on this. Any discussion here? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmember Erickson. Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that one passes six to zero. Next item.
Item 42 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning portion of property located at 4501 West 85th Street from the LW Live Work RA3 Apartment Residential High Density, RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density, and RD2 Townhome Residential Suburban Districts to the RA3 Apartment Residential High Density and CN Conservation Districts, number 15194, 2021, and amending the official map, the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval, five to zero. Private applicants, Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services, AE2S.
This location is at West 85th Street and South Tallgrass Avenue, the southeast corner. It's approximately 16.69 acres in total size. When you see the proposed versus the current, you can see they've actually started working on this area, if you've been out in that area. And so this rezoning is just to match the proposed onsite drainage and the development plans that have moved forward.
All right, thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one? Council, any questions for Albert here? Move approval.
Second Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson. Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that one passes six to zero. Next one, please.
Item 43 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at the northeast corner of Madison Street and Veterans Parkway from the C3 Commercial Community Districts to the S1 General Institutional District, number 15196, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval, five to zero. Private applicants, Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services, AE2S.
All right, this location is at the northwest corner of East Madison Street and North Veterans Parkway. The size of the area being rezoned is approximately 12.45 acres in size, and the purpose here is to construct a Sanford clinic. We do have one thing to note on this one. We're actually, we had a minor tweak that we needed to do, so we're amending, we asked for an amendment to strike out the northeast and insert northwest in the title and the body of the ordinance.
All right, thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? All right, council, any questions for Albert on this item?
Move approval. Jensen. Second Kylie.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie to approve this.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Jensen.
I make a motion to amend by striking northeast and inserting northwest into the title and body of the ordinance. Second Kylie.
Okay, motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie. Let's vote on that amendment, please.
Councilmembers Erickson. Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Now we're at the main motion is amended. Is there any other amendments or discussion on this item? All right, hearing none, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Item 44.
Item 44 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning portion of property located at 7500 South Audi Avenue from the LW Live Work and C3 Commercial Community Districts to the LW Live Work and CN Conservation Districts, number 15251, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval, five to zero. Private applicants, Schulty Real Estate LLC, Mike Schulty.
So this location is located northwest 85th Street and east of South Audi Avenue, just north of the south side Walmart location. Approximate size is 2.76 acres, and the purpose here is updating, again, with that development plan, like we've seen with other ones, drainage ponds going here, so we're updating the plans to reflect such. And there's a minor remnant piece of C3 there that's being converted over to match the remaining piece of the live work.
All right, thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 44? Any questions on this one, council?
Move approval. Second Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve this one. Discussion on that item? All right, hearing none, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that item passes six to zero. Item 45.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
This is red. I need to recuse myself from this item.
You are recused, sir. I will note that with his recusal, we do need five affirmatives on this, for this item to pass, so.
Item 45 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 100 South Grange Avenue from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District, number 15272, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval, six to zero. Private applicants, Coke Hazard Architects, Keith Thompson.
So this location is at the southeast corner of West 9th Street and South Grange Avenue, near the core area of downtown. Size is approximately .15 acres, and the purpose here is to convert that first floor of the building into a coffee shop and the second floor into office space, as we've indicated with the kind of concept plans that you see here. Should be noted here that a neighborhood meeting was held on October 27, the downtown library with representatives from the Pettigrew and Cathedral neighborhoods. Questions were answered by the applicant, and both neighborhoods voiced support for this project.
All right, thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item?
Dear President of Neighborhood Association, we did have a meeting, and I'm going to, I'm going to address it again, because a neighborhood association is the voice and the backbone of your people. This is why I was elected. So if people don't want to hear it, I'm sorry. When we have these neighborhood association meetings, we need the city to tell them the first and second reading of city council meetings, not the second one. I approve this building. I have very faith in Alex. I'm sure Alex has stressed over this. Again, Alex has, is going to put about a million dollars' worth of his money into this property. He could have took that money and did something else with that money. You know how I am about putting stuff in neighborhoods that don't fit in neighborhoods, and you're rich, elite people. And I'm here to tell you that Alex, in my book, is rich, but he is rich at heart. He will do what's best for the community. He will not just put something in a neighborhood and shove it and say, you know what, to help with the neighborhood, you're just going to have to deal with it like that. So I wouldn't call him a rich, elite person by any means. Hopefully, I would like to see this up and running. I just talked to him. If this passes, I think he has 20 days, 21 days, and then whoever the applicant is or his tenant to come in to this neighborhood association, this neighborhood that corners Cathedral and Pettigrew. My only concern, and I talked to him about this concern, is whatever tenant he gets in there, we need to fit the menu prices to the neighborhood. By any means, this is not a rich neighborhood within those few blocks, okay? We're not talking about downtown businesses. Nobody can afford a $9 cup of coffee there. So we need to, we need to be conscious on putting those, those prices down so people can afford it in that neighborhood, okay? This is not a high-end neighborhood by any means. I will go ahead and ask that you do approve this, and I'm going to repeat one more last time before I leave this stand, is that I don't want to come back and have another neighborhood association on developments or any other ones in my neighborhood, and the city is not transparent and honest with both sides of the fence. And the city is not transparent and honest with both sides of the fence here on council meetings. You don't just throw a second reading and tell the people to come to council, it's December the seventh, because that's what I was, we was told. So people would have came tonight and would have missed the first one. It happens quite a bit in other neighborhoods in development. You can't tell me it hasn't, because I know. So moving forward, that's bridge underneath the water. I hope that the city has learned this, because if they haven't, then I'll take some more action on the city for not doing what they're supposed to be doing and notifying the citizens correctly on first and second readings. I'm looking up statutes and laws on that, as I'm talking to you now, that I'm doing that. And from here on, I want the city to make sure that we hear both sides of development, we be transparent with the people, and we give them the first and second readings. Because after the second reading, everything is almost basically done.
Anyone else here to speak on this tonight? All right, council, any questions for Albert?
Move approval, Jensen.
Great.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie to approve item forty-five. Any discussion, council? Counselor Nightcert, you're on to vote for this?
Yes.
All right, we'll take a roll, then.
Councilmember Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightcert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes five to zero. Counselor Jensen will grab Counselor Sale, and we will move on to our next item, item forty-six.
Item forty-six is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving an offer, approving offer to purchase real estate from the city, private applicants, Connolly Properties LLC.
Dustin, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Dustin Powers, Planning and Development Services. Tonight's ordinance would authorize the mayor to enter into a purchase agreement to sell city-owned land located at sixteen-oh-eight West Fifty-first Street to Connolly Properties LLC. The subject property is the remaining remnant of the old ice-and-reck facility property in south-central Sioux Falls, located near the intersection of West Avenue and West Fifty-first Streets. Over the past couple of years, the city has conveyed land to the Glory House to support their mission of providing housing to those who struggle with addiction and mental health problems. And the city has also conveyed land to Connolly Properties LLC to support the expansion of the Coligan Water Operations in Sioux Falls. During the plan review of Connolly Properties' expansion for the Coligan Water Expansion, it was determined that the development needed to provide onsite stormwater treatment for their added facility. And upon further discussion, it was determined that Phase Two of the Glory House expansion for their housing project would also require some onsite stormwater treatment due to the added impervious surface that would be added by both the developments in the area. Following that, Connolly Properties approached the city and came to an offer, offer to purchase the property in order to support both their expansion as well as the expansion of the Glory House development. And so we have brought forward a purchase agreement for your consideration. It'd be with Connolly Properties LLC. It would be selling approximately fourteen thousand square feet of property, again located at sixteen-oh-eight West Fifty-first Street, for fifty-nine thousand dollars. Substantial completion of the warehouse expansion that was approved in the agreement from twenty-twenty would be required within twenty-four months. And then we do have a repurchase option if none of the development happens. Also attached to the purchase agreement tonight is an agreement between Coligan or Connolly Properties as well as Glory House, saying that they would share the stormwater detention that would be built on the site that's part of the purchase agreement tonight. And we do have a letter of support from the Glory House supporting this purchase agreement and the future development of the detention pond to support both the growth of Connolly Properties and as well as Glory House development. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and we do have representative of Connolly Properties here tonight, too.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on item forty-six? Council, got any questions for Dustin on this?
Move to approve, Kylie.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there, council? Hearing none, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightcert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Next item, please.
Next item is forty-seven, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving offer to purchase real estate from the city, private applicants, First Avenue Partners LLC.
This ordinance would authorize the mayor to enter a purchase agreement to sell city-owned property located at four-hundred South First Avenue to First Avenue Partners LLC. The property is located in downtown Sioux Falls at the intersection of South First Avenue and West Twelfth Street. As we've discussed in recent weeks and months, this property is currently a city-owned property that is managed by our public parking system. In order to achieve kind of a higher and better use for the site, the site was made available for redevelopment. Proposals were received, and First Avenue Partners submitted the most advantageous project to the property. This was reviewed by our Parking Advisory Board. They have reviewed the proposal and has recommended that we bring forward an agreement for city council's consideration. So the proposed project on the site would be a minimum of four stories, provide one-hundred-and-fifty residential rental units to the downtown market, and would also include five thousand square feet of retail space located at the twelve, intersection of Twelfth Street and First Avenue. This would be able to be achieved by the developer's ability to assemble the neighboring properties to get this kind of density in this area of downtown. So this view of the property is from the Twelfth Street Plaza, looking to, looking southeast. The next image here would be if you were standing at the post office, looking towards the southwest, so this would be the, the northeast corner of the property. And then the intersection here would be Twelfth Street and Second Avenue. And the third image here is an overview of the, from the south end looking to the north, just kind of showing some of the residential amenities that would be able to be achieved within the courtyard area behind the residential property. So the agreement that you have in front of you today would be, again, with First Avenue Partners LLC. The property to be sold is approximately twenty thousand square feet at four-hundred South First Avenue. The purchase price is five-hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollars. Closing would occur by April first of next year. Commencement of the project would be required to start within twelve months of the approval date, which would be tonight. Completion is required to be done within thirty-six months of tonight, if approved. And then we do, again, have a repurchase option for the property in case the development doesn't occur. So with that, we do have representatives of First Avenue Partners here, if you have any questions, as well as I'll be here.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Good evening, Joe.
Good evening, Joe Bachelor, President of Downtown Sioux Falls. I want to urge council on behalf of the organization, on behalf of the board of directors, to approve this proposal, approve this sale of, of land, I should say, as it will yield much-needed vibrancy and street life to this part of downtown, and get a much higher productive use of land as well. And other than that, I'm not gonna reiterate what I spoke about at the first reading. I'll stand by if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Council, got any questions for Dustin on this one? Look for a motion, please.
Move approval, Jensen.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Counselor Sale to approve item forty-seven. Any discussion amongst the council here? Counselor Sale, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a short comment that I've had a million and a half questions about this development, this piece of property. And I know the constraints when the construction goes taller than four stories and how that impacts the, the costs and the way it needs to be constructed. I believe that downtown needs higher-density use of the land. I think that we can support more people into downtown, and that's gonna come as people continue to live and work downtown. This is gonna add to the flavor. So I will support this, and I look forward to the completion of this project.
All right, thank you, council. Any other discussion on this? All right, let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightcert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that one passes six to zero. Next item, please.
Item forty-eight is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, granting a non-exclusive natural gas franchise to Mid-American Energy Company and Iowa Corporation to furnish and sell natural gas to the city and its inhabitants. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Kurt.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Kurt Peppel, representing Public Works. This item is a first reading for a franchise agreement with Mid-American Energy. If approved, the agreement will allow Mid-American to continue providing gas service in Sioux Falls for the next twenty years. Mid-American's existing twenty-year agreement is set to expire in May second of twenty-twenty-two. Public Works and the city attorney's office started working with Mid-American earlier this year with the goal of having a new agreement in place in the fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-one. This agreement is very similar to other recently executed franchise agreements. And the agreement primarily focuses on requirements for installing and maintaining Mid-American facilities in the city right away. Representatives for Mid-American are here, if you have any questions, and I'll be available as well.
All right, thanks, Kurt. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Council, you have any questions for Kurt here?
Move approval? Second, Kylie.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie to approve forty-eight. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightcert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that one passes six to zero. Next item.
Item forty-nine is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving the fifteen-point-eighty-one M G D expansion commitment agreement, buy-in between Lewis and Clark Rural Water Systems Incorporated and the city of Sioux Falls. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Mark Cotter, representing Public Works. I've got a great news story for you tonight. Have a few slides to kind of frame this up, but the members of Lewis and Clark Regional Water System, of which we're one of twenty, have been talking about the latent capacity or the, there are some efficiencies in the current system that with some, I don't wanna say minor, but with some, with some modifications, additions to the existing base system, we can take that capacity up significantly. And contractually, all twenty members can have their allotted chair, so we'll frame that up a little bit better for you here. So we have a few slides that we'll take you through. We'll take you through the organization creation, Lewis and Clark members, an infrastructure map, what's been built and what's yet to be built, base system background, expansion background, and then our request of you tonight to move this forward. So for those that don't know, Lewis and Clark Regional Water System began its planning back in nineteen ninety-three. Sioux Falls was one of, a small group of the founding members. Been one of the best decisions, in my opinion, that has set Sioux Falls on a, on its progressive growth that we enjoy today. Construction began in twenty-two thousand four. We got our first drop of water from Lewis and Clark System in two thousand twelve. There's twenty members in three states, base systems eighty-six percent complete. You'll see on a map, but there's still a dedicated line to go from Minnetonka Community Rural Water up to Madison, another one from over by Worthington, down to Sibley, and then a third section from Hull over to Sheldon. So once those get complete, the base system's actually complete. And once complete, the system will be self-sustaining with rates. There are eleven members in South Dakota, there's four members in Minnesota, and five members in Iowa. Just giving you a picture of what the base system is, where the treatment plant is, we're having access to the Missouri River, one of the most sustainable water basins in the United States. The hard lines are, are built, number of transmission mains, elevated storage towers, ground storage reservoirs, those dash lines that we just verbalized, those are the parts of the system, along with some elevated storage elements yet to be built. The current one-point-two-trillion-dollar infrastructure bill that's being contemplated has substantial funds to finish a number of rural water systems. Lewis and Clark likely would be very favorably looked at for some of these shovel-ready projects. All right, so Lewis and Clark's reserve capacity is forty-four-point-one-million gallons per day. This expansion contemplates that it could increase its capacity by fifteen-point-eight-one million gallons a day to achieve a plant and distribution system capacity of sixty-million gallons per day. Sioux Falls, back in the day, there was a series of agreements that were set up that reserved, of the forty-four-point-one-nine-million gallons per day, Sioux Falls reserves twenty-eight-million gallons of that base system capacity. And based on the percentages of the base system, with your support, we'd be able to buy an additional six-point-four-million gallons of water capacity per day. Scheduled tonight is first reading, next week is second reading. We'd like to work together with the system to start the design of this system in early twenty-twenty-two. Likely, most of the members, including Sioux Falls, don't need this additional capacity for probably a fair amount of time, say, eight to ten years. But there's certainly a chance with the ARPA dollars that are contemplated through the state that Lewis and Clark could receive some of those. And having all the members sign their expansion commitment agreements allows for a more organized approach to start the design and ultimately start to make these incremental changes. So with that, we're here to answer any questions for you.
All right, thanks, Mark. Anyone from the public here to speak on item forty-nine? Council, got any questions for Mr. Cotter here on this one? All right, look for a motion, please.
Move to approve?
Second, Erickson.
Motion by Kylie, seconded by Erickson to approve forty-nine. Discussion on that one? Counselor Sale, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm old enough to remember when we chose, as a city, to go this route and abandon Slip-Up Creek, which we still own some property up there, by the way. And I will say, it's the forward thinking of those people back twenty-plus years ago that brought the city, helped us bring to the point that we're at now to be a very prosperous city. And as Counselor Jensen and I have talked about several occasions, the, the impact that we have today for the next ten, twenty, thirty years is, could be immense. And I believe this is a step in the right direction to get that water that we don't need today, but we're gonna need it someday. So I believe it's the right thing to do, and I'd appreciate the support on this item.
All right, thank you, Counselor Sale. Any other discussion here? All right, let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightcert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, that passes six-zero. Item fifty, please.
Item fifty is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, by revising boundaries for voting precincts as set forth in section thirty-eight-point-zero-zero-three of chapter thirty-eight, Elections. Recommendation set a date, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Sponsor is councilmembers Jensen and Sale.
Tom, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. This is, this proposed ordinance is a necessary follow-on to the work that the district and commission has done. As you recall, they were appointed around this time last year and recently finished their work by providing their report to the council last month. That is, that report is effective. And what you see here are a series of changes to six precinct designations, reflecting And what you see here are a series of changes to six precinct designations, reflecting the work that they did. In the top left, you can see the current precincts that we have, 1, 3, down through 511, and the proposed name designations. All this does with those six precincts is put them in a different district, give them a new naming designation, which will be updated in total votes so that people obviously know their correct precinct. Now, one actual boundary change is in the southwest part of the city. I have it circled in yellow. Presently, the western boundary for precinct 117, this is something that we took note of. The western boundary of 117 is Ellis Road. We do have some recently annexed land to the west of that in that darker red. What this would do is just set the western boundary of 117 as the western city limits, allowing it to expand as the city limits expand. That's all I have for this, and would recommend that you set the date of second reading for next Tuesday.
All right, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public here to speak on this one?
I'm David Zokitis, and I do a lot of commenting, because it's good to do that. And I'd like to comment that there's no gerrymandering here. Isn't that nice? We hear about different parts of the country gerrymandering their districts and making a mess and making voting much more biased, but I don't see that here. So, that's good, cool, nice.
All right, thank you. Anyone else to speak on this item? All right, council, you got any questions for Tom here? If not, I'd ask for a motion instead of date of second reading for Tuesday, December 14th.
Move.
Kylie?
Second, Selberg.
Motion by Kylie, seconded by Selberg. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's vote, please.
Council members Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Item 51.
Item 51 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce for the management of the Sioux Falls Visitor Information Center and viewing tower at Falls Park. Sponsor is the mayor.
Hi, Jackie.
Hi, good evening. Jackie Nelson, Parks and Recreation, talking to you tonight about the Falls Park Visitor Center Management Agreement. So just to kind of give you a quick recap from a timeline perspective, the park board did approve this agreement back on November 17th. On November 23rd, we did present at city council informational, per the management agreement compliance standards. And then here tonight to present the resolution with this going effective January 1st, should it be approved. In regard to the agreement itself, the current agreement does expire here on December 31st, so at the end of this year. It currently is a five-year agreement that is expiring. The new agreement will be a nine-month term, beginning January 1st, 2022, through September 30th of '22. Reason for the nine-month term is due to some discussions that are currently happening between the chamber and Experience Sioux Falls, or CDB, which is the old name for Experience Sioux Falls. They're currently having discussions in regard to a separate legal status for Experience Sioux Falls. Therefore, we're asking for a nine-month term to allow them to have those discussions, finalize what they need to finalize, and then we will revisit a longer-term agreement once that is concluded. The 930, that nine-month term, does coincide currently with the chamber's fiscal year, so we wanted to make it align with what they are currently accustomed to. And then we do have a 60-day termination clause within this new agreement that the city is able to exercise to be able to rewrite the agreement after the legal status for Experience Sioux Falls has been finalized. In addition to the term, just a few other minor agree, or minor updates to the agreement. Again, the first one will be changing the name of CDB throughout the agreement to Experience Sioux Falls. The second would be in Section 3 under scope of services. A number five, we just kind of added a little bit more clarity around it. So in the past, specific marketing materials were listed, but we know those change over time, especially over five years. So we did just make it more generic in terms of clarifying that it's other print and digital marketing. So Experience Sioux Falls would be able to put any type of marketing in their facility. It doesn't have to be specific to what is listed in the agreement. And then finally, Section 9, we did change how hours of operation language was worded. Previously, they did have to present to us when they would be open, days, specific times. However, we know, especially in the past couple of years with COVID, how that has shifted and changed and can, it may not be as stated in the agreement. So we did make it where if they want to change hours or look at different hours of operations, they do need to just present it and have it pre-approved by the director prior to moving forward. Beyond that, there were no other changes to the agreement. I do have Terry Schmidt here with me from Experience Sioux Falls, and she or I would be happy to, happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Jackie. Anyone from the public wish to speak on item 51? Council, any questions for Jackie or for Terry?
Move to approve, Kylie.
Second.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Erickson to approve 51. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, hearing none, let's take a vote on it, please.
Council members Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Onto 52, please.
Item 52 is a resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Annexation 015492, 2021, Prairie Meadows Edition. Sponsor is the mayor.
All right, so this is a voluntary annexation petition. It's brought forward to you. Police staff and the residents in the area have been working on this for about 10 years over different attempts and size. The latest attempt here and push has been a lot of thanks to the Santeria Sewer District Board itself to help go out, talk to neighbors about this, collect signatures, and present a petition to the city. With this area, the collection of signatures in the whole area, we initially wanted to capture the entire area pretty much to the east of South Ellis Road and take the whole district that's east of that in. After going through door-to-door, talking to neighbors, getting signatures, we were a little shy on the requirement from the state for doing a voluntary annexation. So we re-scoped it and had the board send out notices to every property owner in there identifying that this reshaping was happening. So in case they had major concerns over that and they had signed previously, they could retract their signature. With that, we moved forward then, and we had 87 out of 113 registered voters, that's 77%, and just over $11.5 million out of the almost $14 million of property value, around 83% almost, signing the petition, asking for this annexation. Oh, sorry. This also, to note, includes right-of-way being annexed in to help kind of the maintenance of the roads, things like that. So you'll see Ellis Road being annexed in all the way, even though the one area being excluded, West 42nd Street, between Ellis Road and Klein Avenue, where also we are still taking Ellis all the way up to the South Ellis, so that's just continual service for the city of Sioux Falls. This annexation will allow the properties being annexed to keep the in-city water and sewer rates, which we've been giving them over the past year through an agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and the Santeria Sewer District. So any properties being excluded out here will not receive that in-city rate, they will be moved over to out-of-city rate. All property owners being annexed and remaining unannexed have been notified by the city through a letter identifying if they're being annexed or not annexed. In addition, abutting property owners have been identified and mailed a letter letting them know about the annexation. Members of the Santeria Sewer Board and Public Works are here if you have any questions for them. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 52 tonight?
Good evening.
Hello, my name is Lucas Gueye. I'm on 46th Street, and I've been part of these discussions since at least 2014. We moved into our house in 2008, and I heard discussions of potential annexation from that time. My wife and I have mainly been a no through this process. There's times I've leaned yes, depending on the proposals and the agreements. We did have the most recent meeting in February of this past year, and things started, I guess, to change from the area that was going to be annexed, where the west side of Ellis Road was granted to opt out and not be included in this because nobody on that side wanted it. And the large percentage of the opposition was on 42nd Street, that west side of 42nd Street. On 46, currently, my, my wife and I do not want this. I see this as, I guess, moving the goalposts to say, well, we want this whole area and the majority, or not maybe the majority, but didn't hit the 75% to get the annexation. And now it's like, well, we can just kind of cut out this area and cut out this area and now meet the percentages, which, I don't know. I guess, being part of the no, I'm not happy with it. Part of the people who are going to be the yeses are going to be happy with it. We were presented with two different ways to come into the city, like an urban or a rural. The rural just mainly being, as far as my recollection, just paving the road, maybe like minimal lights. I've heard of ditch improvements, then maybe not ditch improvements, so I don't know what's going to go on there, because there's a lot of drainage issues on 42nd and 46. Since they put in that addition, I guess it's called, I think, the Daniels addition around there, there's a lot of water when, when we get heavy rains and a lot of standing water. I know 42nd gets it worse than our street does. Where my property is at, we're at the lower part of 46, so we have a lot of standing water for days. And I don't know all of the ordinances, I will admit this to the city, but I don't know if we get annexed in, how long standing water can be sitting there, is there going to be enough improvements done to correct this? What happens if we get annexed in the city and we have standing water for three, four, five days on our property and it's not draining properly? That's just basically all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lucas. Anyone else here to speak on item 52 tonight?
Jeff Davis, Prairie Meadows, sanitary district and resident Prairie Meadows. I'd like to begin with, this is more than a annexation out of any geographic need. This was a sewer district that was in serious trouble four years ago, with over $125,000 worth of debt to the city, an $800,000 grant with the DNR that was soon to be gone, had been rewritten about three, four times, and we'd been notified that there was, it was going away. So there's $800,000 that's needed for sewer and water upgrades for the neighborhood, for Prairie Meadows. It was going to go away. In addition to that, our sewer district had $75,000, $7,500 worth of bad debt outstanding and no money in the bank other than the monthly that came in and almost uncontrollable pumping We've remedied all of that over the last four years with this package deal, and I need to, while we're in the midst of defending our position on annexation, I need to take a moment and I need to thank the Southeastern Council of Governments, Mark Cotter, Albert Schmidt, Mike Heiburger, Adam Roach, and the flexibility of the department and the city and a willingness to help us cure the sewer problem. The sewer problem was a Prairie Meadows problem. The necessity and the, what, what people don't realize is, with the loss of the grant, with the, with the cost of sewer upgrade, with the debt that we owed for pumping charges, that represented $17,000 per household in, in liability, and it didn't even fix, didn't even fix the sewer. So by, by working through this with the city and their cooperation and our vote for annexation, we're able to upgrade our neighborhood. It, it, it's no surprise that every single person isn't happy with it. Nobody ever is in a vote, but the majority ruled. Almost everybody got what they wanted. And in my own mind, we didn't have very many choices. We have, we have to have sewer and water. Most of us want pavement, we're tired of it, the damage that's, you know, the, the pressures that were put on Prairie Meadows from development around us, it's not going to stay country forever, no matter how bad you want it to. We did the best we could to get everybody that we, you know, at least a portion of what they wanted. I apologize to those that are, or I feel bad for those that, that are against it. But if they, at some point in time, you can't just criticize what's going on unless you've got an alternative plan that works. And the recovery of the sewer district today, it has money in the bank, we've collected all the past dollars, we've made an agreement with the city. The entire Prairie Meadows neighborhood has already enjoyed over $100 a month savings in utility costs for the last almost 18 months. So that savings alone will almost fund the marginal tax increase and, and the, any other, the assessment even, the assessments are, the assessment estimates are less than half of what they were eight years ago. I think all the bases have been covered. There was integrity of our vote. You're going to hear, you'll probably hear that I'm a liar or that there's no, you know, I can assure you that everything was verified by, by the voting roster, by state law, city law, and that we did the best we could. And either way, I'm, I know, there's a big relief for me tonight, because regardless of how you vote, I'm done with it tonight. I've been fighting this for 11 years, including having to, we even had to sue Wayne Township to get, get our, our roads plowed 11 years ago. I mean, it's just been a constant fight to fight the degradation of a good neighborhood for the last 11, 12 years. So I hope, hope we can get this done, and I would say thanks again. It's great to be in front of you guys again, and it's, we appreciate being a part of Sioux Falls.
Thanks, Jeff. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Come on up.
Thank you, folks. My name is Mike Whitrock, 8100 West 46th Street. First off, I'd like to thank you for all of his work that he did to try and help resolve the sewer issues, but I do have some questions. He said the vote was taken, we were told the vote was taken last February. That's the last time I ever heard of anything about this until about a month ago. And then I got a letter saying that this was the proposed plan. And then last week, I got a letter from the city saying that this is when it was going to be taken care of, at the first reading would be tonight. So I guess I just have a question. What does the actual law say in regards to annexation? Because we are a sewer district as a whole, and we shouldn't be able to divide us to get what we want. You know, we are as a one, as a whole, we shouldn't be able to change the boundaries to get the outcome that we, we choose. And I think that's what some of the people are doing. If that's the case, why don't we look at it as housing districts? Because there's actually two different housing districts in this area, and they could go at it that way and do the petitions that way. I know since February, there has been some landowner changes, and I don't know if those people have had a chance to get a full view of this or anything. I'm, I'm not sure, because I didn't find out anything until just over a month ago. So I guess my other question is that what kind of protection do we have under the law under a forced annexation or a volunteer annexation? I did talk to a gentleman from the state today, and he said he's going to try and find that out, but I haven't heard back from him, so I'm not sure. And I, my thought process is that we need to make sure that we afford ourselves the most legal standpoint that we can have in an annexation. I think the city is a great city. I, I think you guys all do a great job. I hope someday that I will be able to vote for you people. I, you know, with everything that's happened in the last couple of years, I commend what you have done for the city. So it's not that I'm opposed to being part of the city, I just want it to be done the right way, and I don't want any back corners cut to make it so we can be part of a city that I think is a great city. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mike. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right, seeing no other public input. I'm going to start with questions. I believe Counselor Nightzert, you have a question on the phone for Albert?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thanks to Jeff for laying out the challenges and the success based on the cooperation of the city in Prairie Meadows, and thanks to Jeff for his service on the annexation task force back in 2017. So will Klein Avenue from 41st to 42nd be paved? And if so, who, who, who would be, well, who will make that decision? And is there any other infrastructure improvements that are required or will happen abutting the, the properties that are going to be annexed?
Great questions. So from our side of things, the annexation and the infrastructure side aren't exactly tied hand-in-hand together on this side of it. So with any infrastructure questions, I will let Public Works come up here and try to give you a little better idea of what could be on the agenda for them.
Kurt, you want to get put on the spot, try to answer that one? I think the question was Klein Avenue, 42nd to 46, who, who pays for that?
Yeah, right now, we are, take the calls and complaints on Klein Avenue, so we are doing maintenance on that. That would be one of our priorities to get to an urban section, to make that connectivity to the neighborhood to the south, get some sidewalks out there with the school down there, and making that connection to 41st Street. We would be participating in some level at that, just because there is such a amount of traffic on that and the benefit to the city of getting that done sooner rather than later.
Any follow-up to that, Counselor Nightzert?
No, thank you.
All right, other questions then tonight? Other questions then tonight for Albert? All right. Seeing no questions, I look for a motion.
Move to approve, Kylie.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Kylie, second, and by Jensen. Discussion amongst the council on this one. Counselor Kylie, go ahead.
Well, thank you. It, it's, it is good to see movement on this in, in 10 to 11 years because this was an issue before Counselor Erickson and myself came on the council nearly eight, eight years ago. And while it is not everybody, it is a good portion of this particular development, and I think it's a step forward in the, in the correct direction, and hopefully it will actually encourage others to see the improvements and the, and the positive results that come from this annexation, and it'll encourage others to do it as well in the future. And I, I'd like to thank Jeff too for his participation, as well as Counselor Nitschert and Counselor Selberg for their particip, participation in the Annexation Task Force back in 2017, because it's some of the rural infrastructure standards modifications that were put in place by that particular task force that I think have enabled us to get to this point today because it's offered the flexibility that was lacking previously. So I thank Jeff and everybody else that was involved in that five years ago, and I'm looking forward to voting yes on this item.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Kylie. Any other discussion here on this one? All right. Hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitschert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right. That one's going to pass six to zero. Item fifty-three, please.
Item fifty-three is a resolution amending the 2021-2025 capital program to add a new project core facade, facade revitalization in 2021. Sponsors, Councilmember Sale and Erickson.
Counselor Sale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a reenactment of the facade easement program. It was established in 2001, and through time, there had been a period when there was no applicants, so it was kind of dropped. I'm going to give you a very quick overview, as most of us are familiar with this program in the past. Previous award projects like the Harvester Building, Tuthill Lumber, Longfellow Elementary, the Heritage Park Fire Station, which was the old Eastside Fire Station, which is a great place, by the way, but it was put in place to stimulate new investment into core area buildings and to make sure that their properties would meet the standards that we've had for the unique aesthetic appeal of the city's downtown. So in a nutshell, the older buildings, instead of putting up glass and aluminum and stuff, they could be retrofitted so that they would meet the period that they were built. And so the city supports that. We've always supported it, and now we found some extra money, I think Sean Pritchard and his guys, to put this back in place. And I'm just going to read the last paragraph of the notes that were sent to me from planning and zoning. "It's important to note that the facade program has a significant interest among property owners downtown and throughout the core. The planning staff has heard from several property owners about resurrecting the program. In fact, one came in yesterday and inquired about two potential projects." So this, this resolution would have, be funded program, the city had, was very successful, and now we're going to breathe some new life into it.
All right. Anyone from the public here to speak on item fifty-three?
Good evening. Grant, 1510 South Phillips Avenue, representing Hellman Properties. This is one of those programs, I would go back, I'll be kind of starting my age, when I started redeveloping downtown, I was a young man, and now it's kind of interesting to see where this downtown has started and where it is today because nobody would have ever envisioned it. I would say there's probably six or seven large items, whether it be Phillips to Falls, whether it be the Pavilion, whether it be the closing of the Loop. I would put this in the top seven of items that saved our downtown and brought our downtown back. If you don't know your history, you don't know where you're going. And as a property owner downtown, I don't look as myself as the owner of the building. I'm a caretaker, and I'm protecting this building for future generations, and I would love to make sure that the next building owner has the same care that I do. And the building owner is giving up a lot. They're giving up the front one foot of that facade, meaning the city of Sioux Falls has a say in what that building owner does. They're, they're getting a small amount of money to redo that building, but they're giving up control of that front one foot. And this, and I'll give you some of the examples of the buildings that we did. Everybody goes, Joe Size is one of those really popular. That building was saved. That's a, I can give you some of the old architecture. When we were building Washington Square, a engineer, a structural engineer came in from Washington Square, and he was okay with Washington Square. He walked into Joe Size and said, "I've seen pictures of these, I've seen them in books, I've heard about them, I've never seen a double bow-trust wood joy system." It's a 1917 building, it was probably the, one of the very last like it ever built. And I think nine out of 10 guys would have tore it down and put something big and shiny, exactly what Kurt said. And, and I just think that that program, you know, and I can go on, I can, you know, the Chevy, the old Chevy Art Deco building on the corner that the law firm is in. And a lot of times, when you start these projects, and if I get cut off, I can get going on these old buildings forever, when you start on these projects, you, you know, the money that goes into the facade, you're betting on the future, not on what you're going to make today. You're betting that future, that the, there's going to be better returns in the future when you put the money in. And things like the facade program really makes you put the, like the limestone, I've found, like if you look at the little flower petals, and if you really take detail, especially into the Chevy building, because there's a lot of, a detail that was put into that building, and it won, won a state award. The flower petals that are in each one of the corners, the chevron decal that's made out of stone, that came out of an Indiana quarry, and the, the stone was sent down to, to Utah, and the Mormons did the, the engravings on it to bring it all back to original, and the scales and everything. The window details between the one-third to two-thirds scales at the old Chevys. When we were redoing that building, you had mechanics' wives who had, the gentleman had passed away years ago, a lady from Brandon came every day to watch that building come back to its original grandeur. And those kind of stories, I could go on and on about, and programs like this have a deep meaning. Mr. Halback, when I heard his program and I saw what that building is going through and the pains to try to make the numbers work, you want to do it right. Your heart is in the right place, but your bank is telling you you're nuts, because I was told that. And, and you're, these, that small amount of money, that facade money that goes towards that building, will, it helps preserve it for the future generations to see, and you will see something in that neighborhood happen that's contagious. When one building gets redone, people start taking pride in their buildings. Washington Square, what you see across from Washington Square, or in Washington Square back across from the Pavilion, was nothing like that 20 years ago. It was an absolute cesspool. I mean, it was nothing like you envisioned today. But one person started cleaning up their block, started cleaning up a building, started redoing a building, and did it to other buildings, and it's, it's contagious. People want to be proud of their properties, but this little tiny project and this little tiny part of the budget can have a massive impact on our community. And what I see, where I see it going is, is the area that Alex is looking at, and then all the way up street, all the way to Cliff. There's a lot of great old historical buildings that need that extra little nudge, and we have a great planning department that will help make sure that that historical significance is saved. And I will take any questions, I mean, we've done these old buildings for years, and I would take any questions anybody has, because it's, it's a great program, and I'm really happy to see the council and the mayor bringing it back. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Grant. Anyone else here to speak on item fifty-three tonight? Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, counsel, my name is Alex Halback. You saw my project presented earlier today for a second reading on the rezone of what is a residential property going back to commercial. Grant touched on it a little bit, and I didn't know he was coming tonight, so that's kind of, kind of nice. But a lot of these projects, honestly, from an economics perspective, don't necessarily work, and you have banks that tell you, you know, this is really great if you want to come with 100% of the cash to do these types of projects. And they're important projects for the neighborhood, they're important projects for Sioux Falls. That little building that I'm looking at, trying to save up in the Cathedral District would be a few years from a complete loss if I wouldn't have purchased it and stepped in and tried to come up with a solution or a plan for it. And these dollars, while I know that, that the $120,000 that you guys are funding had to come from somewhere, and I respect and appreciate that it means that somebody else got $120,000 less, but I echo Grant's sentiments in saying that those hundred, that $120,000 can be super impactful, not only for the building, for a project like this, but also to really help a neighborhood. And I think that's what you will see, you know, if, if ultimately my project receives some of these dollars. I do intend to apply. I appreciate that the council and the mayor has prioritized this for 2021, and I think that there are lots of buildings and lots of projects that would be eligible and that will be able to take advantage of this. So thank you.
All right. Thanks, Alex. Anyone else here to speak on fifty-three here tonight? All right. Seeing no other public input, let's get a motion on the floor on it.
Move to approve. Second, Sale.
Okay. Then we'll go into discussion. Counselor Erickson.
Thank you. When Counselor Sale and I started talking about this and kind of looking through the, where are we going to find the money? What are we going to do? What is the right dollar amount? And we just wanted to find something. We, we would love for it to be more, but we just want it to be something for now to get that funding mechanism back in there. You know, we don't have a ton of economic development tools to really impact some of these facilities, and, you know, they're, they're do or die for some of them. This is the difference of a project getting done or not getting done. I own some, some rentals in the kind of core neighborhood as well, and we revitalized one that would not have been in this, this program or anything, but a former speaker said that once one person starts doing them, they start kind of trickling, and that kind of pride and homeownership really takes on. And we did a, a project on First Ave, and all, you know, a few other neighbors started doing this and planting trees and painting fences, and it's just fun to see the revitalization in the neighborhoods. And so I'm excited for this tool. I'm excited that we're able to expand the footprint. It's a small amount, but I, I hope that the community realizes that, you know, revitalization is important to us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Other discussion, counsel? We've got a motion, a second on this one on the floor. All right. Hearing none, let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitschert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Sale?
Yes.
All right. That one passes six to zero. Move on to item fifty-four, please.
Item fifty-four is a resolution, a resolution authorizing an application for financial assistance, authorizing the execution and submittal of the application, and designating an authorized representative to certify and sign payment requests. The sponsor is the mayor.
Hey, Donnie.
Hey, good morning, Mayor, or good afternoon.
Whoa, easy, buddy.
Mayor and city council. Geez. So this resolution would allow the landfill to apply for this waste shredder grant, and it would ultimately improve the volume reduction of the bulky waste material and enhance airspace utilization, and ultimately extend the life of our landfill, so we're always looking for efficient ways to operate. And so this, we have conducted a successful pilot study on a similar machine just like this and have found it to have a substantial waste reduction in the material we, we see at the landfill. So if approved and, and requirements met by South Dakota DNR, we could see anywhere from 25 to 50% of financial assistance through that program, which this program is funded through a $1 surcharge that the city municipal landfills put it to this, this program, and with the landfill in Sioux Falls here getting approximately 200,000 ton of material, we, we definitely put in a substantial amount of money into that program. So with that, just would greatly appreciate your support on this application.
All right. Thanks, Donnie. Anyone from the public here to speak on fifty-four tonight? Counsel, you got any questions for Donnie on this grant application? All right. Seeing none, let's take a motion, please.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale to approve this. Any discussion on that, counsel? All right. Let's vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitschert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Next item?
Item fifty-five is a notice of transfer of appropriations on the memorandum dated November 24th, 2021.
All right. Counsel, any new business tonight? All right. We're going to move then into public input. Public input, three minutes per person, and on items we didn't cover earlier in the evening, so anybody for general public input can come on forward.
Come on up.
Come on up, man.
Michael Stangland, still a concerned Sioux Falls citizen. At the last city council meeting, there was a unanimous decision to spend another $23,863 of our taxpayer money, on what I understand to be further efforts to convince COVID shot holdouts to change their minds. Here is the problem. For shot, holdouts such as myself, that $23,863 of our taxpayer money is just another $23,863 reasons to never get a COVID shot. If you need more information why, you don't need to spend more money, you just need to ask us. I know I'm more than happy to talk about it, and I'm sure other holdouts would be happy to do the same. In the interest of fairness, I'd like to be open to the possibility that the results of this $23,000 of research is to conclude that you've hit the law of diminishing returns. If it convinces you that it's not worth it to spend more money selling COVID shots, then maybe that $23,000 will be worth it. If not, however, then we need to ask how much money is worth it if the results aren't there. $23,000 may not sound like much, but that money adds up. Let's not forget that it's only taken two years to go from two years to flatten the curve to pushing regular booster shots for everyone indefinitely. So what is the ultimate goal? Are you looking for an 80% shot rate, a 90% shot rate? Will you only be satisfied if you hit 100% shot rate? How much are you prepared to spend per person to reach that rate? Is it worth $100 per person, $1,000 per person? Are you prepared to spend $10,000 per holdout trying to change our minds? Earlier this year, the city council rejected a proposal to not increase property taxes, which was done so on grounds of fiscal responsibility. If you really believe in such fiscal responsibility, then you need to answer these questions now, because I can assure you that we holdouts who refuse to get the shot can outlast any amount of money you spend trying to change our minds. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Other public input, now is your time.
Greetings. I'm David Zalkitis, and tonight's talk is about how we as a city can work together to reduce and to heal addiction. So when you talk like, like this should have a reasonable definition of addiction, basically it's a way for people to hide their pain from themselves and usually to get a little crazy along the way. A clinical definition of addiction talks about social factors, environmental problems, and genetic predisposition. One of the big problems with addiction is that after a little while, your brain changes, and that makes cravings much more severe. People get addicted to all manner of different things, like work, sugar, caffeine, alcohol, illegal drugs. Addicts usually have a trail of misery that they tell, starting with stress and trauma, personal pain, missing parents perhaps, and then often leading to incarceration and nasty crimes along the way. I saw this billboard, and so that makes me think that one approach to addiction is to try to create more crime and put more people in jail. That's kind of related to support for law enforcement. But there's a better approach. Maybe we should switch from a punishment paradigm to thinking, thinking about healing. And, you know, if alcohol is safe, maybe that, then drugs that are safer, that alcohol should be legal because they're safer, and cannabis certainly qualifies for that. And cannabis certainly qualifies for that. Here's more for a better approach. We should decriminalize illegal drugs nationally and use all of that money for social supports. Addiction itself should never be illegal. And then maybe we should put a large bounty on international meth labs and make them all disappear. Still more good ideas. We could have some community education, um, warning signs on bars, meet it, and you gotta meet people where they are if you wanna help them change. Still more good ideas. We should practice Christian family values and help people that need our help the very most. And of course, you know, you gotta have something to smile about. Here's a sunset in my backyard, so enjoy life, enjoy color, and help make the world a better place. Good evening.
All right, thanks, David. Anyone else for public input tonight?
Chair of Research, Sioux Falls, I wanna thank the chair and everybody for having, um, public input on agenda items. Um, hopefully it will continue, um, to do so. If not, then, um, accountability will be held again. So it was better than, the meeting this, uh, this time was better than the last meeting. Hopefully I don't have to go through the process over again. David's Bar update, um, so they are selling the bar as of January to some new people. It's supposed to be a restaurant. They haven't transferred liquor licenses over, I really don't care if they do or don't. Um, the police is still investigating in their, uh, alcohol violations, um, on, um, the bar. I'm sure he owns more than one liquor license. Let's talk about Bishop Dudley. I'm glad that the Argus leader, um, got onto this. And I keep telling y'all, but y'all don't care. Some of y'all are rich. And sometimes when I talk to rich people, they don't think like you're regular middle class people, because something that takes five minutes takes them five days or five hours to do. Not all rich people on our level. 20% of the calls from the police department this year alone, from the Bishop Dudley. The diocese is rich, they're millionaires. Can you let them fund the Bishop Dudley? And let's pull out of it and stop giving them $130,000. I am pushing with the police that, um, Madeline gets her stuff together, because if not, well, I don't ha- I don't mind arresting all of them. I've done, arrested so many transits and testified in court, it's ridiculous. We'll put them back in the prison system. We can do it. I called Los Angeles, California, two shelters, and as of this year, guess what? Guess how ridiculous this is? Seven to nine percent of their call volume from police this year, we're talking about Los Angeles, California. We're talking about a small city, that's not even California, that the Bishop Dudley is taking 20% of our taxpayers' money to have the police be their personal police. We got a problem. The rich people need to step up. The rich people need to stop giving money to Bishop Dudley. Let the diocese take care of the Bishop Dudley, because the diocese own it. We're enabling these individuals, we're enabling these people by giving them a handout. We got people all over, coming from all over here, from the United States here, because we're so giving and Christian and give handsouts. When is the limit for it? A giver has limits, but a receiver doesn't have any limits. So we need to put, put, put a stop on this Bishop Dudley, and we need to act accordingly to this Bishop Dudley, and the rich people needs to stop giving funding to the Bishop Dudley.
All right, anyone else for public input tonight?
My name is Chad Bishop, I live at 7405 South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. This week, the mayor of New York will require children as young as five to be fully vaccinated and show proof of vaccination to dine out. Medical apartheid here in the United States of America. Papers, please, in the largest city in the United States of America. Let's do the opposite of New York City. Could Sioux Falls and South Dakota lead the way by actually using science to calculate our current community immunity? When questioned on CNN by Sanjay Gupta, Dr. Fauci conceded natural immunity had to be discussed seriously, having no firm answer when asked to justify mandatory vaccination for COVID-19 recovered after the Israeli data was published. All he could do is fall back to the question of durable natural immunity, or durability. The Argus leader reports on October 17th that 21 months' worth of state epidemiological data shows empirically that less than 1% have been reinfected. Do you think he knows? This is a one-in-a-hundred-year pandemic where we have created trillions of dollars of debt to deal with the fallout, and yet we have failed to avail ourselves of many available and inexpensive tools. Specific serology, not just as a component of epidemiology, but as an avenue for managing our collective risk and eliminating the artificial, artificial vaccinated versus unvaccinated divide as a political narrative. As of today, there have been 1,000, 144,290 cases documented by the South Dakota Department of Health. From my previous statement to this body in August, that likely represents only a fraction of the total infected and COVID-19 recovered, per the CDC's own epidemiological models. The question I ask you both then and now is, why aren't we doing the serology at scale, and why do we not know the answer to the question of what number of South Dakotans are COVID-19 recovered? There is now over 974 million for COVID-19 relief in the state treasury. In an attempt to use science to resolve these artificially divisive political issues, rebuild trust with a skeptical public, and bring clarity to policymaking at all levels within the state, including this body, I am asking for you as community leaders to call upon the state legislators and the governor to support legislation, supporting and funding the following public health campaign proposals summarized for time here. One, acknowledge COVID-19 recovered status is superior or equivalent to that of vaccination for all South Dakota residents. Two, reimburse all South Dakota residents for SARS-CoV-2 antibody tests and adaptive T-cell response assays, including N-type antibody assays that are capable of obviating the need for further boosters. Call for the immediate release of the Sanford Survive Study, their surveillance study. Perhaps the Argus leader could help us out on that one. Department of Health to solicit and compile anonymized serology data from the blood banks. The Department of Health to solicit and compile anonymized serology data from the commercial laboratories. The Department of Health to add a dashboard calculation of community immunity from the voluntarily vaccinated plus the COVID-19 recovered. The Department of Health to expedite and calculate CDC equivalent for the state epidemic threshold calculation as well as excess death. Thank you for your time.
All right, thanks, Chad. Anyone else for public input tonight? All right, seen no more, and ask for a motion to adjourn us out?
So move, Jensen.
Second.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale. Uh, we gotta do a roll call vote. Thanks, Greg.
Counselor member Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.